Call the meeting to order.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order, this is Thursday, December 12th. I'm calling the, um, Rona Park Planning Commission Meeting to Order. First, we'll start with a roll call.
Roll call is as follows. Chairperson Epstein.
Present.
Commissioner Orlov.
Here.
Commissioner Austin Dillon.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb is excused absent. She may be a little late.
Okay, uh, we'll start with the reading of the land acknowledgement. The city of Rona Park acknowledges indigenous peoples as the traditional stewards of the land. Let it be acknowledged that the city of Rona Park is located within the traditional homeland of the Federated Indians of Great Manchuria comprised of Coast Miwok and Southern Homo Indians. Okay, uh, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And we'll start, uh, if there are persons who wish to speak to the commission on any item tonight, uh, that, uh, or an item that is not on the agenda, uh, each speaker will be allowed three minutes. And if you would like to submit a comment card, please come over and do so. Moving on to the consent calendar, we'll start with the approval of the draft minutes for the joint special meeting of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Planning Commission regular meeting from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I motion to approve the minutes.
We have, uh, motion from Commissioner Austin.
I'll second.
Second. From Commissioner Orlov. Do we do a roll call?
Roll call is as follows. For approval of the minutes, Chairperson Epstein.
Aye.
Commissioner Orlov.
Yes.
Commissioner Austin Dillon.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb is excused absent. The motion passes with three ayes, zero noes, and one excuse absent.
All right, moving on to item number six, six point one. This is a presentation, uh, we're going to be receiving an informal report on the local hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you. Um, so our department is currently working on an update to the local hazard mitigation plan. Today's presentation will be limited to kind of an overview of what we're working on and an opportunity to provide comments that then we can use to integrate, um, with consideration into the draft itself. Um, so we don't have the plan itself ready at this point. As some background, the local hazard mitigation plan, um, is a plan that assesses risk and vulnerability and identifies mitigation actions, um, that will help reduce our risk from natural hazards. This is a plan that must be updated every five years with our current plan expiring in February, twenty twenty-five. Having an approved plan helps keep the city eligible for disaster recovery funding and hazard mitigation funding. For the update, we'll be identifying and analyzing changes that have happened, um, since the preparation of the current hazard mitigation plan, uh, changes in risk levels, changes in development patterns, changes in city priorities. Uh, we'll be doing some continued outreach throughout this plan, um, looking at some equity considerations, updating the data and analysis included within the plan and revisiting the mitigation strategy. This mitigation strategy is a main portion of the plan. Um, what you see in your attachment is some of those actions from the last plan. Uh, the strategy we intend to use for this plan update includes continuing most of those actions from the previous plan. Um, this allows us to keep seeking funding for those, whether they're things that are ongoing implementation items or discrete projects, um, we'd like to be able to continue getting grant funding. Uh, we'll be taking those discrete action items that were completed off the list and then taking a look if there's any other discrete action items that we need to add to the list. These actions can include plans and regulations, specific structure, infrastructure projects, natural system protections, or more of the programmatic education and awareness programs. Wanted to talk a little bit about regional coordination here. Uh, Sonoma County does have funding to prepare a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. This approach has a lot of countywide data and analysis, um, and then a city-specific annex, um, or appendix that covers city-specific conditions. This approach would allow us to be more in coordination with the neighboring agencies, um, and is a bit more cost-effective in terms of planning. Um, however, if we're to do that, the city still needs an updated plan for this interim period, um, between now and fall twenty twenty-six. Our current plan would be to join the county's plan in twenty twenty-six and then be aligned with them for future updates. In terms of outreach and some equity considerations, we did host an initial table at National Night Out, um, gaining some input from residents there and letting people sign up for the mailing list. We held a stakeholder meeting with some housing service providers, um, getting more information on what they hear from the populations they serve, um, as well as, um, things that they don't feel they're getting in terms of support for, um, early notification flooding events, um, and things of that nature. We've done some outreach to other neighboring agencies, jurisdictions, Chamber of Commerce, Sonoma State. And I think we've had some things in some newsletters and presentations that aren't mentioned here. And we have at least one planned utility bill insert that would be bilingual, um, going to all residents with an opportunity to say, this is going on, here's how you can provide input. Next steps for this project would be to, um, take whatever input we hear, integrate that within the public review draft. Once that public review draft is ready, that goes out for a public comment period. There are reviews of this plan by Cal OES and FEMA, uh, so state and federal level approvals. Staff will work with these agencies to address any outstanding comment. FEMA gives us kind of a tentative thumbs up or approvable pending adoption. Then the city would adopt that LHMP and we would, at that point, be in compliance and eligible for these funding sources. Our SEQA slide, um, this is an informational presentation, you're not making any decisions tonight, so not subject to SEQA. Um, we believe that adoption of this plan will be exempt, um, under this general rule exemption, but we'll take a closer look at that when we're getting ready for adoption. That concludes the presentation. It's ready for questions and comments, um, from commission and then public.
Thanks, Elliot. I, um, I think I would like a little bit more understanding of what exactly is this? Like, I hear your presentation, but how does this work for somebody living in the city? What are the things they should be looking for? What does this plan actually cover?
Thank you. Um, so the things that we're looking at in this plan, I think, if I can take your question in two parts, the first being kind of reiterating, wh-what is this plan? Um, and second of all, how does this affect residents? Um, are those your questions? Okay. Um, so the plan covers impacts from natural hazards. We're looking mainly at, uh, flood, fire, earthquakes, um, extreme heat, liquefaction, um, those types of natural hazards, uh, looking at risks in the city. So are those, um, risks to loss of life? Are those risks to loss of structure? Preventing evacuation, uh, those types of risks. And then looking at what can we do now to mitigate those risks later? So what actions can we take now to reduce those risks when it happens? This looks like, um, what natural system things can we do with riverbanks? Uh, maybe upstream so that flooding impacts reduce? Can we raise some roads so that the flooding doesn't affect them? Flooding is, um, top of mind because of our recent events. Um, but, um, seismic rehabilitation, we're looking at things like, uh, we have a wildfire camera grant that we got from our previous plan that are really things of what can we do now so that when these events happen, because they will, we're in the best position? In terms of how does this affect residents, uh, we're really looking at, um, what, what risks, um, are most top of mind for you? Um, where do you feel like the city has shortcomings? Are those, again, in the notification systems, do you feel like you're hearing about these things with enough time to prepare? Do you feel you have the skills and knowledge to prepare? Do you feel like the city's infrastructure is not, um, in the place it needs to be, um, to withstand these, these events? Um, and then being able to use that input and say, these are the mitigation actions or the specific kind of measures we're going to take to proactively prepare for these hazards? Um, and then, again, going back to having those actions in the list then lets us get the funding to cover those.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, Elliot, I have a couple of questions. Um, on the outreach and equity piece of it, I know that the outreach was covered. At least if I sound really loud, um, outreach was covered on the slide. Um, I, I'm not sure if equity was, and I'm not sure how this affects things. People don't understand, I don't think necessarily, um, what is important to them until something happens to them. I, if you were to have had a meeting right after the floods, you probably would have seen a lot of people off Snyder come to a meeting to talk about the, the lack of, um, of, of sewer, I guess, the sewer issues in some of those neighborhoods being able to take water away. Um, you might have found the same thing on the west side of town with businesses and how they were affected. Um, as time goes on, those things pass and, and you get meetings where people don't bring those things up. I think it's incumbent upon the city to make sure that they tell the residents what those issues are. Um, we have approximately, what, two to three thousand new residents that are scheduled to move in at some point in Sonoma Mountain Village. You know, what have we done to make sure that those people are properly protected? Um, whether it be fire, police, um, sewer, water, et cetera? Um, do we have the budget? Have we considered the budget? Um, you know, I, 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 I think that we just, you know, this is a great opportunity, um, as we study this, to consider those things, but I don't think it can just be outreach. I think that the city has to tell the citizens sort of what is necessary. Okay.
Um, that, that is a really good point and something Elliot and I have talked about. Um, we've done some outreach where we've like tried to collect information and the next step for us has been, how do we, um, because we've gotten some input, but how do we really like be more proactive and like, you know, get out there and convince people to like really listen to what this is and how to participate? And, um, I think you make a really good point, like identifying the hazards that they should be thinking about and allowing them an opportu- providing them, you know, with some, uh, kind of pathway on how they could participate and what their participation means. Um, that, that's the thing that inspired us to go, well, what, what else can we do? Uh, can we send something in the utility mail order so that there's like really a widespread sharing of information? And so we'll continue to work through that. I think that's a really good point that you make.
Yeah, because I, I don't think in the general plan, the housing unit really covers that. And what we've done with our, with what's going on with housing here is it's, it's tilted towards the southern part of the city. And so, you know, y- you could drive through K section or, or W section and, you know, we have these streets that are really skinny compared to the rest of town. And what's the effect? And how are we, uh, dealing with that issue when it comes to fire and, and police protection? What's, what's, you know, I, I'm seeing these, these houses go up in, in Sonoma Mountain Village now and it's, it's like I could shake hands with my neighbor through my upstairs window. You know, it, it's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, uh, lack of space, but lots of, lots of people plan to be there. Um, I don't even know, to be honest with you, if, if we have a fire, uh, or public safety station scheduled to be built down that way.
Yes.
We do.
The answer is yes, yeah.
Because we built there, but it's, that's, you would think that would be one of the first things that we do, you know, instead of waiting for all the houses to go in.
But from my understanding, that's going to replace the one that's...
In, 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 um, M section?
Speaking to your mic.
No, I, and, uh, yeah, that's going to replace the one in M section that's in the house across from the gas station, I believe. So, um, I could be wrong. Um, and to just kind of boomerang off that, I want to start by thanking the staff for having conversations and working with us on this. Um, some of these things I brought up to the staff, but I want to make sure they're on the record because there are things that I'm concerned about that I think play into this. Um, you know, part of the hazard mitigation plan is identifying new hazards and things that, uh, maybe weren't an issue the last time we did this. So a few months ago, we talked about hydrogen fuel stations and how we expedited the permit process for that per state law. Um, and we had, um, Chief Johnson come and talk to us about public safety's ability to respond to that. And I think we're all in the understanding that, um, our public safety department's wonderful. They're not a hazmat department. And so those resources would come from the county. And so as we've talked about, I think it's important that we really review if we have streamlined the ability for people to get, uh, hydrogen, um, station permits, that is a new hazard to the city. So I think that definitely should be reflected in the hazard mitigation plan of how are we dealing with the possibility of, um, any type of leak or issue from high... Um, some of the other things that just bullet point, um, I've been, uh, very adamant about the need for a new fire fuel study. Um, you know, we are building lots and lots of residents and I'm really glad that we are. However, every stick of wood that we put up is fire fuel. And we live accro- you know, across from a large, uh, wildland urban interface area that we are impacted by, hence the new camera we're going up. But I don't think that the city's done a wildland, or I'm sorry, a fire fuel density study. I don't even know the last time it was done. And I think that's really important for us to understand what are we looking at? What is, what, how much has our fire fuel density levels changed? And what does that mean for staffing in response from our public safety agency? Um, on those terms, there's something called the standards of coverage study that public safety agencies do. It evaluates, um, based on size, population, makeup of the city, resources. Um, do we have enough public safety? Do we have people in the right places? Are the fire stations, to your point, in the right locations? Um, I, you know, I don't think we've done one in the city in some time. And I am, my concern is that public safety is woefully understaffed for not just the new residents we're bringing, the new houses that we're bringing, but the new downtown. And so I think we definitely need to look at that, um, as well and support public safety. Um, you know, as you've heard me say over and over again, anytime there's a new project, my big concerns are traffic study, public safety, and the schools, right? And so I think that we just need to support our public safety department and push those studies so that they have the staffing and equipment needed to do the job, um, that they do so well. Um, the other thing that I would bring up too, and I know, you know, as it plays into this, is I think we really need to have a strong conversation, uh, with public safety, but, you know, in general with the city about the understanding of what EMS looks like in the city. So we do not have ALS services that are, um, um, organic to the city. So what I mean by that is that Rona Park Public Safety is a BLS agency. All of their, uh, medical responders are EMTs. And we rely on outside resources for all of our paramedic and ambulance response. And so what does that look like in a statewide? I'm sorry, in a countywide emergency? Because if you, it would probably scare you to look at, uh, any day up at Redcom, which is the dispatch center for the county, when we're at critical levels and when there are not, there are no ambulances in the city of Rona Park and when we're relying on emergency ALS response from the city of Petaluma or the, the city of Santa Rosa. And that's on a, any typical Wednesday. So what does that look like in a major emergency? Um, and I'm not, you know, throwing grenades in, but I think that that's things that we really need to look at. Um, you know, understanding that mutual aid and automatic aid are key pieces of our public safety plan and that every city and jurisdiction in this county relies heavily on, um, automatic and mutual aid. I think those of you that were here in seventeen, uh, can remember what happens when there's a countywide emergency and those mutual and automatic aid plans are no longer functional. So as we move forward, I think we just need to really look at what does that mean, uh, for us? And what do, how are we organically able to care for ourselves? And, um, because we, as we continue to grow, which again, I think is a positive, we're bringing more and more people into the city, and which means the ratio of response time and responsibility is lowered.
And through the chair, if I could just comment on a few of the, um, comments that you made, which were all very good comments, um, and staff will certainly look at those as we're working on the local hazard mitigation plan. Um, s- some of them may be more appropriately addressed in the general plan update that we're doing. So for, and that will be next year, so there'll be a chance to look at these next year. Like, for example, public safety levels, um, are typically something that's covered in other chapters of the general plan. So that may not be covered in the local hazard mitigation plan, but it will be something that you'll have a chance to look at next year in other chapters of the general plan update when that's moving forward.
No, and I understand that. I just think that talking about hazard mitigation brings those things up. And with the general plan coming up for review next year, any one of these studies, if we started yesterday, would probably not be ready by next year. So I just think we need to really focus on, you know, as we move forward and look at, all of these are dominoes and we look at our hazard mitigation plan and then our general plan, we really need to look at what information do we have and what's outdated.
Yeah, it's a, it's a timely topic, given the general plan, so thank you.
I would also add that when you're seeking feedback, calling it a hazard mitigation plan, I don't know if that lands with people, because I know I'm sitting here and I was like, what is that, right? But when you explained it, I got it, right? And so whatever you can do to communicate, what are you actually trying to find out is going to be important. Um, and then the second thing I was thinking is, um, you mentioned that it's going to be a part of the Sonoma County plan. Is that a change, it sounds like, and why that change? And if it's not a change, what does their plan say about hazard mitigation?
I, I mean, so generally, um, when you have big topics like this and rely on, you know, um, multiple agency coordination, um, it's a really good idea to coordinate these types of things. We have to do a local hazard mitigation plan. It's required for us to be able to get funding to do the work that we need to address these hazards. And, um, it makes sense for us to be coordinating with the other agencies around us because some things like fire hazards, for example, um, flooding, those all, uh, earthquakes, you know, they don't happen just to us, they happen kind of on a bigger, um, scale. And, um, uh, you know, it's important for us to coordinate. It's, you know, we get a bigger bank for our buck when we are coordinating with each other and we're all doing the same thing, we're all doing the same work. We come up with policies that are consistent and approaches are consistent and we know how to communicate with each other when something does happen because we've been working with each other on these, um, on these plans. And yeah, to your point, I think you're right. I think we have, um, regarding the title of the plan, we're so used to, it's called the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan because that's what the state, or what we're required to have. But, you know, there is an opportunity to maybe add to that, like, something that's more understandable to the community. Still Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, but an explanation of what that's addressing. So I think we'll take that.
Um, ju-just one other comment. I recall a few years ago, there was a, there was a concern that sometimes the, the, the city council isn't aware of some of the concerns that we have when we raise them. I would just ask that, um, because they're in the, they're going to start budget planning, you know, for next fiscal year, some of these things that Commissioner Epstein raises should be part of that, um, that discussion. And thus, the council should be made aware of these comments tonight. So to the extent that that can be, um, coordinated, I think it'd be helpful.
Okay. Are there, there's no public? So I'm going to assume there's no public comment. Um, so then, moving on to item number seven, unless there's another comment?
Um, I'm, I'm just going to ask the city attorney, are we obligated to open and close public hearing even though there's nobody in the audience?
As there's no one present, I think it's fine to note that for the record, but thank you for checking.
We don't, we don't get the same crowd that city council gets. All right, moving on to item number seven, development activity update.
Right, uh, so our next item, the development activity update. Uh, as we're hitting the end of the year now, we wanted to just go over, similar to what we did last year, identifying project statuses across the city. Um, some of these are things that you all approved at the planning level that are now in construction. Some of them are things that are applications that will be coming to you, um, eventually. And then summarizing what we've done this year. Got the big map at first, you do not have to read all of this detail here. Um, but we're going to take a little tour around the map. So just know where we've got color, we've got activity. Um, and we'll jump into the first place. University District, Specific Plan Area. This is what our master plan looks like. And here we've got the status. So things that have changed this year, um, you saw the Creth project earlier this year. Um, and we have now completed all of the lots in Fast Oak North. So a large portion of the University District Specific Plan is developed. Nothing new on the School District site. Um, and no additional information on the UD LLC site at this point. Uh, that still does have its approved tentative map. Next, we'll go to the Northeast Specific Plan Area. Um, same as last year, still outside the city. We have no active application, still identified for eventual annexation. Going down the other side to Southeast Specific Plan Area. Here we have our pretty master plan. When we add the colors, uh, we've got three phases in the apartments built. Uh, Phase Four is the wrong color, sorry. Um, that is under construction right now. They pulled their first building permits. Uh, the townhomes are, um, I believe they have their building permit applications in. They're working on getting those building permits right now. And, um, we have no new applications or anything on that retail corner at this point.
I thought, I thought that section was supposed to be retailed also, the townhome spot.
Uh, that is, uh, let's see, if I look back, those are forty-five townhome units. Um, that has not changed recently. I don't remember there was something different with the original, but... Uh, yeah, forty-five units of townhomes, that's where they have a good portion of their remaining affordable housing. Going down to Sonoma Village, um, area, as discussed, we've got a lot of activity, um, in this year. Here we're looking at the master plan overview. Jumping in, this Phase One NA is under construction, hundred sixteen single-family homes. They've completed, they're almost done with Block Three and about halfway done with Block Five. Um, and thirty-two townhome units that, uh, are coming along well in Block Nine. Uh, last I checked, we have about thirty homes finalized, which is occupied. Um, so that's coming along there. We do still have a tentative map application in for this Phase One NB with some smaller homes and a home for fu- or, and a lot for future subdivision. Uh, we do have more recent application on this side. They switched to focusing on this Two NA tentative map. Um, and this has a lot of those, I think, around eighty lots of, um, similar single-family that we see in Phase One NA. Those three blocks in the middle being reserved for future cottage court-type development, um, a similar medium density, a large, um, with a kind of commons base in the middle. And then some of our parkland on the outside of the ball field, the wetlands, um, and I think there's a splash park down further. a splash park down further. Then total opposite side of the city, we got our northwest area, looking pretty similar to last year, not a lot of activity, occasionally development inquiries on some of those remaining lots. All that grayed-out area is under tribal jurisdiction, as we've discussed. We do have one small application in there, which will be a site plan and architectural review, that'll be coming to you shortly. Going down a little bit, we've got the Stadium Lands Five Creek area. Last time you saw this, we were still under construction, and now we have that whole area complete. We do have a little bit of capacity remaining on that public institutional site where Le Bath Landing is currently. I think you can kind of see north of Le Bath Landing on, can I use my pointer? Right there, we've got some empty land still. That area is on a housing element site, I think, that with Le Bath under their kind of medium-term lease, we might see how that, how that lease term goes before deciding what we're doing with that area, but that is the only area left in here where you might still see some activity. Other projects, so we're going to jump all around the city right now, this is zoomed out from where we were with the Five Creek area. Holiday Inn Express, Redwood Crossings, and Poppy Machinery are all kind of have their planning approvals and are various stages in their condition compliance and building permit stages. Those are all areas where they have to do some kind of plant surveys and some environmental work before they can move forward, but they are all in the process. Jumping down here, Home Two Suites is under construction. They are going vertical. We do still have a planning application in for this overflow parking lot across the street from a church. That is a conditional use permit application, so if that moves forward, it will come here. One project that you have seen was Center Line, the pickleball facility, that one you have seen, and they are moving forward with their building permit applications. And then in Rancho Verde, you see, we still do have a planning application on file for the mobile home park expansion. This was on your presentation last year, and we don't have any updates on that, but it's still in our application list. Another project that might come to you, this is along golf course and country club. We do have a CUP amendment in for that Walmart neighborhood grocery. This would not be a physical expansion of the footprint, but an expansion of their operation into some of those neighboring tenant suites, so you will likely see this one soon.
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
It's going to be an expansion into where?
Into the neighboring tenant suites, so some of the places where the smaller businesses are right now, they're looking at expanding their grocery store operation.
So to the west of where they're at now?
A little bit to the east. So if you see, I tried to make the blue area there, kind of that little section that juts out to the east there, they're looking at occupying those suites as well. So I tried to use my pointer.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So kind of towards east section.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Then the downtown area, we are in our exclusive negotiating agreement with the developer for downtown, so we've got that moving forward. We do also have a planning application in still for the mixed-use building residential with cafe on the ground floor up there on City Center Drive, that would come before the downtown design review board. So we're kind of wrapping up some sequel work on that and hoping that that will be ready soon. A little bit more on downtown, we do have the site plan, this is what they submitted during the RFQ process, it might be familiar because it was in the Press Democrat, but I want to just give you a look at what they had submitted there and kind of flip that around to get a better view of what that looks like on the site. So we're working through kind of concept plan stage review right now, these are things that will come before the downtown design review board, before their approval. And from there, some fun little numbers for you. Twenty twenty-four, we received applications for twelve ADUs, twenty admin use permits, four sign programs, twenty-two sign permits, and eight temporary use permits. So that's what's been keeping us occupied, other than the things you've seen. Little summary table, we've got our first numbers in Sommo Village, University District, Willow Glen are all at about seventy-five percent residential buildout, the first ten percent of the Central River Park PDA, and that's our summary table. I think that is our last slide. So there is your tour, thanks for holding on for the roller coaster ride and going all around the city. Any questions?
I have questions on the university district, can you go back to that slide? I think it's the first one, yeah. Future commercial, is there anything happening there?
Not at this point.
No, so the applicant, the developer, has been trying to find a, somebody that they can build for, they're actively looking, but we don't have an application at this point.
So according to the agreement, do they have a timeline? What if they just don't build?
Yeah, so they do, and their timeline is based on their development agreement. They just went through a development agreement, a men, update, extension. So, I mean, they don't want their agreement to expire, they have another development south of the Red, Rona Park Expressway that they want to develop, I'm assuming, but theoretically, I guess their agreement could expire and they would not have, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, then they would not have an obligation at that point, once the DA expires.
That, that's correct. They would not have that obligation, and, and I believe, but I'll, I can confirm that, that there's not, you know, an obligation to construct, but if they do construct, it needs to be in accordance with the development agreement and the approved development plan, so that that area would need to be commercial.
So the developer can just leave that? So the developer can just leave that land vacant forever?
They could. There's, there's no, there's no requirement, although I will confirm that there's nothing in the development agreement that requires that.
I see. It's really weird, like, every part of that university district is super nice, but that one, that particular land has been fenced off for years, and there's no, there's no, like, plans and nothing, and, and it's just really weird with, like, the new development with the vacant land there for years. My second question is for the future one hundred thirty-three units, is it also like a complex, or like, what kind of unit are they talking, are we talking about?
So we don't have specific plans for what these, these would look like right now, these were studied within, let's see if I go back, no, it doesn't show it. In the larger plan, in terms of how many units can we fit there and what type of units would we allow, that is slated for the low and medium density in the current plan, which looks like what you see in vast oak. So that's what's in the current plans, in terms of what they're allowed to build, but no kind of specifics.
If, if I can comment on a couple of things. On, on the future commercial, before any of you guys were on the planning commission, the developer came and asked that they be relieved of the commercial aspect of that, that corner, to develop it into homes, that was rejected, and they, and they were doing that because they tried to market that location and had no takers. I mean, there's a lot of vacancies in town, and there's just not a lot of people that want to put a commercial, any commercial on that corner. As it pertains to the school district site, a study was done when I was on the school board, and I think it was approximately, I, I think you're right, I think it's one hundred thirty-three units. There was a study done, they were in contract to sell that to a developer, the contract fell apart, and as far as I'm aware, there's no plan to develop that property presently.
My second question is, along the Rona Park Expressway, across Cary, there's like a little mountain, I have asked that question before, they're still doing a lot of work over the mountain, almost like putting it up, putting it down, putting it up over the past, I would say, at least twelve months. So what is the, what status right now?
That's a good question. Will you let me know when you see movement? The, the site itself, it's, that's basically the, the area that you see where the university, UD LLC two hundred and three units, that's basically the site that you're talking about. They have a pit that is intended to be a temporary detention basin, we're in the process of working through documents for a more permanent detention basin, until we have a more permanent detention basin, they are obligated to keep this temporary detention basin in place, unless we can find an alternative, and we're going through modeling right now to kind of assess the actual need for them to, you know, what, what they're obligated to provide in terms of detention. But I'm interested in hearing when you see some activity and grading, because I don't know what they could possibly be doing, and I would want to be asking that question when it's happening.
There's truck in and out every day, and they have the hill, little hill, like lower the hill and then put it up again, and then they sometimes put some grass on it, sometimes they take it off, and they sometimes put green ones on it, and then sometimes they put another kind of color layers of it. It, it's just really dusty all the time because they keep moving the sand over and over again. I don't, so that's why I'm asking, like, what's the purpose for them doing that? If the future is to build units, that's fine, we just, you know, we all live there, and we were just talking to neighbors about, like, what's the purpose of doing that? Why are we doing that? And because it really causes a lot of dust around that area, so.
I can, I can find out, and
Thank you.
We'll be reaching out to them, for sure.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to follow up briefly, that I did confirm there is no timeframe or phasing requirement for the, for that commercial site, so if it does develop, it needs to be commercial, but there's no requirement that they develop it.
And I'm assuming that's the same case over at the corner on Willow Glen, that they don't need to?
In, in southeast, I believe that to be the case as well, but I can confirm that also.
Yeah, and that's, so just, I know, I mean, I know it's a point in contention with a lot of people that live there, because when they bought their homes, they were, and this is not on the city, of course, it's on the developer, but there was, that was, for some people, some of the talking points is, and we're going to be developing this retail center. So I just think that it would be, bode well for us to be as transparent as possible to those residents when it comes to the fact that there are no plans, there don't have to be plans, and there probably aren't going to be plans, because that's something they need to be taking up with the developer.
And, and that same, well, and that developer also approached the planning commission to change that from commercial to housing, and that was also rejected, their arguments being that there was going to be a lot of commercial in the Sommo buildout, and that this small corner was inconsequential to the overall construction of that area, and that was, again, rejected.
So long-term, what are, you may not know, and I don't, I'm not trying to surprise anybody, but what is, so what are the long-term, who owns the long-term requirements of maintaining that if they're not going to make it commercial? Because right now, it's a lot of grass. And so during, I, I know they're building homes on that other piece on the other side of the apartment building eventually, but if they're not going to develop that front piece?
It's private property, so they're obligated to maintain it, so if they're, you know, we will reach out to them during the, you know, weed abatement periods, you know, they're obligated to maintain it. If there's garbage on it, if there's any, you know, we respond and we, we make them address whatever issues are on, arise on that property, but it's, yeah, it's private property, so they're obligated to maintain.
I'm curious about the downtown. I keep getting questions, I don't know about you all, but I feel like the public doesn't know what's happening, isn't well-informed, and I don't really have a good answer on what's happening, besides there's a downtown review board that's going to start at some point, but what can we say to residents? Is there a website? Is there a, what's the plan?
Yes, that's a really good question. So the exclusive negotiating agreement has laid out a, you know, kind of a schedule for what the applicant is required to provide us, within what timeframe. On that note, they were obligated to provide us a plan now, and they have, a conceptual plan, and our obligation now is to review this conceptual plan, provide comments, meet and confer, and then bring this to the city council as part of the next phase, sometime in, end of January or February, remind me what, yeah, something like that. And then, you know, what they're looking for is, you, we're kind of in the middle of negotiating the terms of a development agreement, and they're going to be looking for the city council to say, okay, we like your approach in concept, right? Like, we, we are okay with the approach that you're taking, go ahead and proceed and submit formal applications. Once they submit a formal application, we'll go through the process that we normally go through with development review applications, and that means we review the project for completeness to make sure they have all of the information that we need to be able to bring something to your commission for consideration and a recommendation to the city council. So we are trying, our website is difficult, we're trying to keep things updated. We, like Elliot said, we just did receive an application, and there are two ways, actually, to get a hold of that, we're going to be uploading that conceptual design review into our permit tracking system, and that system is, we were going to start structuring it so some of this information can be available to the public. In the meantime, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Kevin is going to be updating the conceptual design to the website, and if not, we can...
I don't know, but we can follow up with him.
Yeah, we can follow up with him.
You raised a point that I forgot to raise in item six point one, but since it also affects this item, I'm going to raise it. You, for very nice in describing the city's website as difficult, I would say it's, there's a better word for it, and it's a far worse word, I would say that outreach involves reconstructing the city's website.
One hundred percent. We are in the process, you'll be happy to know, we are in the process of moving into a new vendor that will, I already looked, had a presentation on how easy it is to make adjustments, and it'll be so much easier to provide updates to, to community members and, you know, give updates, and yeah, it'll be a dramatic improvement.
So in layman's terms, if someone asks me, what's going on with the downtown terrain, I can say it's in the process of being reviewed, and more details will be available soon. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think the, a, a good response, and I can send you some talking points, a good response would be, the city is currently in negotiations, or in the early phases of negotiations. The developer is required to submit a concept plan, staff has told me a concept plan has been submitted in accordance with their obligation, and it'll be reviewed and taken to the city council sometime in February. I, I'll get you a date, I'll, I'll send you some bullet points and talking points.
I'd appreciate that, yeah. And then as far as the downtown review board, when does that process start? Is that an additional meeting that will be all, I guess we're all a part of that board? Do we get invited to that? Is it this meeting? What does that look like?
So the downtown design review board, so you all are members of the downtown design review board, what will happen is staff will be providing a present, staff report and presentation, similar to the way we handle staff reports under SPAR review, and we'll be notifying the public, we'll provide notification in the community voice, but it's basically, would be a presentation to you by staff, and then the developer would be here providing their own presentation as well, and what would be asked of you is a recommendation to the city council. A recommendation to the city council.
All right, if there is nothing else, we will take a look at this year's highlight video slideshow. Which I thought was pretty good, I saw it the other day. Thank you, that's a good video. Hopefully that, that'll be online, right?
It's on YouTube.
Okay, good, I like it. Okay, moving right along. Um, are there any items from the planning commission?
I, I feel like a bloke, broken record sometimes, but I'm still interested in outreach for the southwest corridor. Um, every time I pass by there, it's still an eyesore and I think there's. Stakeholder meetings that can be, that can take place, that can be more transparent. As to what the process is, I know there's signage, I think, indicating that the wall is, at least parts of the wall are going to be. Redone at some point, but I know there's been some infrastructure updates um in B section. Um, but that, that corridor still, I mean, it'd be nice to, to get the ownership of, of the large shopping center and some of this, this. Uh, small strip malls together just to discuss either, you know, aesthetics, a plan with the city, maybe there's a. A plan that can be hatched that uh has a, a low interest uh component to it to help. Uh, property owners maintain their property, so.
Well, I just, as our last meeting for the year, I wanted to thank all my fellow commissioners. It's been a good year. I enjoy working with all of you, I think. I, I, for someone who sits in a lot of meetings, I consistently tell people that this is um the most orderly and concise meeting that I'm in all month. Um, I don't know if that's good for this meeting or terrible for my other meetings, but uh it is, I want to thank the staff for always. Um, being prepared, overly prepared and for taking time to keep us informed and um. I look forward to passing the baton on to Mark to be the chair next year and I look forward to. Doing great things and seeing um a lot of stuff accomplished next year, so just thank you to everybody, appreciate it. If there is um, nothing else from here, I'll go back to the development services staff?
Yes, I have a couple of things I wanted to give you an update on. Um, I reached out a couple of months ago about the planning commissioner academy. Sounds like all of you were interested, which I was really happy to see, so Coteal has begun. Um, processing the paperwork and get, getting everyone registered. Um, I'm going to be attending as well, so I really look forward to um spending time with all of you and getting an opportunity to. Hear what um the academy is like. Um, I've been to some of these and they're really amazing, um, really provide important information. Um.
Can you, can you um restate the dates for that, just so I can make sure that I get it on my work calendar?
Do you have those dates?
I'll email that to you.
Okay.
It's gonna be in March.
It's March fifth through the seventh in Santa Rosa.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, and uh you mentioned the changing of the guard in January, um, we also have. Uh, in January, the appointments for the uh vacant planning commissioner, so um we're hoping to hear about what that. Who that will be soon and um an appointment here soon, so you'll have a full team again. Um, but there will be a changing of the guard, new chair, new vice chair. Um, so uh that'll be, that nomination and appointment will be done in January. Um, that's all I have.
I had a question real quick, so for the, for those of us that have expired terms, when will we be notified if our term has been extended?
Um, expired terms this, this season?
Like mine expired, Fanny, I don't know if yours expired, yeah, we expired this month.
So um, the process is that you file an application, I believe, I saw your names on the list. Um, and then the um appointments are made by the, by the city council members of that district. Um, so you'll hear shortly, you'll probably hear before I do, so. Um, I did reach out to our city clerk recently and said, what's the timeframe? And she's hoping to have the appointments in the first meeting of January, so you should be hearing soon. Um, but if you don't, um, we'll.
You're automatically extended, you don't get to leave.
If there is nothing else, I will say that the meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a nice holiday.